How did we come up with the, um, the last name?
Good morning.
Yeah.
Uh, it was just getting to be about me, so I'm secondary. I feel like they're paying now. Oh, my God. So that was good and then, um, yeah, just a little bit of the points I need to, um, back to the ones that's in the crowd.
Okay.
And your jaw gets a bit. Yeah.
Okay, all right, so often.
Okay.
All right.
Scary. We all can call for it, right?
I don't remember.
Yeah, okay. We're gonna call the meeting order. Thank you very much for coming. This is largely a work session, so we're going to, uh, go straight to having public comment at the very beginning of the meeting, three minutes each person, and then we're gonna suspend public comment involving work on proposed changes to 2072. And what that means is Watkin County Code includes mostly building codes and things like that, and the design and otherwise were mostly, um, focused on the Gulf Road corridor, the commercial properties, and so, um, that was sort of the impetus of why these code revisions became urgent because there's so many discrepancies with the code and current businesses trying to exist in the area, so we're making, um, we're going to potentially discuss proposed changes. This board doesn't have any power to make any changes. All we do is bring recommendations to Watkin County and the various boards, and Watkin County Council makes the ultimate decision. So if you have any questions or comments about what we're doing here today? Do we? Or is it our turn now?
It is your turn.
I do. That's great. Great. You want to start out or?
No. Um, I've just got a question on the fact that, um, I'm at Jonah Drive, two seven, two seven four Jonah Drive.
Can we?
I'm not there, please.
Sorry. Your name and record?
Shelley.
Yep.
S- S-T-U-T-T, Stott. And, um, I've owned it for about thirty years. When I bought, I was told that the, uh, that Jonah Drive was to go right through to Benson and meet Benson because they wanted to make sure they had an alternate route for the emergency responsibles to come through. And now I've got that tape across Jonah Drive, not me, but my neighbor. And, um, we're wondering why they have not followed through with, with going, going through with that road. And that's one question. The other question is a concern, actually, and it's on our ditches and during. I'm at the bottom of, of Jonah, so not the very bottom, there is somebody that has property there as well, and that individual has the taping. I thought county roads, first of all, shouldn't be taped, but I don't know if this is one of them.
They need to block off.
Sorry?
Tape like the road is actually constructed.
I didn't.
The road is blocked off?
The road is blocked off, yeah. And, um, I've raised this, I've been dealing with lawyers and surveyors who get everything confirmed that I originally tried to confirm that this thing was, uh, successfully. So we've got lawyers dealing with, uh, in, uh, in land, dealing with all the importation and stuff like that, but I don't really know how someone can do this. How, like, is that? It's been there for a year and a half, almost two years, that we, we dealt with this. And now I own this today, it's even moved further, so if I'm backing out my car from this driveway, I'm actually going underneath this group of black tape.
It's silver and yellow.
Right?
Is it yellow?
Oh, it was yellow, it was red, and it was black. And, uh, I had a construction company from, um, Bellingham come in and they measured all the importations on my property and they measured, um, everything and they read, they dug up everything where the, my survey flats were or plates were, they, somebody had taken out all the ones that were showing on the, um, on the top of my, um, on acres. And then, so he's confirmed that all the original ones still are there and he's done another, uh, visual for me, so, you know, I have to work to help for a year and a half or something. So I'm wondering about, about that, and I'm worried about the fact that our drainage ditches, I've been told that someone has put an offer into buy of it or is intending on doing that?
Buy the road?
Yes. I've already gone to the Bellingham County Port area about that because I've looked like that. And, um, yeah, like I've had enough, I've had everything, you name it, I've had it happen, basically. Yeah, that property. In the last two years, year and a half, two years. Our drainage is having issues because, um, the individual has had people digging on the backside of my property now, which is a flat floor, it's right in behind. This is all drainage.
Okay, I would say, um, move to, I think that the purposes of this committee, I'm not exactly sure that we're going to be able to help you. I think that you are going directly to public works, Watkin County Public Works, and if you're, you've already, uh, engaged the services of an attorney, I think you are on the best route to find your resolution. This organization was appointed by Watkin County Council to bring community-wide issues to Watkin County Council that they are going to be voting on so that they can get, uh, a temperature of a particular county, community-wide issue. I understand that.
It's not just me. It's not just you. I pulled the survey, uh, pulled the actual forms.
We can write to Watkin County Public Works and confirm that your files open and ask if they need anything from this committee.
No, they are dealing with the, because when I talked to, uh, I've got his name somewhere, but when I talked to the manager of the public works for Washington County, who brought all of Washington State out, so, um, they said that, uh, they had not heard from anybody yet and that they are at first contact.
They are at first contact.
So now he's following up on that portion himself.
Okay.
I am following up through my lawyer on the fact that I've had three incidences of huge trees coming through my, my family now from the city, and I have another one, two, leaving. So there's a whole lot of stuff going on, but, um, it's been a year and a half, two years, actually over two years, I think now.
For respect only to road access, I would expect to contact the, um, the sheriff's office.
Yeah.
Because they're the ones that should be taking care of, uh, the, the road access. The road now is at a dead end.
Yes, no, it was supposed to. When we bought and.
No, it isn't today.
It, it, no. Apparently she's, she's considering denying the tape as her, which is part of.
Yeah, the road is at that. I mentioned, yeah. Before we went, yeah, before we quit. And I think, I think Stephanie has a place in the end of that road, doesn't she? I mean, totally, we need Stephanie out of place on the end of the road. Do it.
No. No, the tape is actually before the county road ends.
Yeah. Well, Sheriff's Office should, should arrange to have that removed and that should kind of, and include a gain of access in the road.
Yeah. Yeah, you can't just block off a road.
It was, it didn't help us, she apparently just blocked off everything in one except the field and everything, so, you know.
Okay, so it's definitely, that's like we can just, public works, they need to, the files open. Okay, so we will do that, but that is at the extent of, we don't have the authority to do it and.
We can have a clarification of what they intend to do and keep us informed.
Why?
Well, it's, it's good to know what's happening in the county officially. So we're dealing with brain work on all kinds of issues. This is just yet another issue to at least ask.
Okay.
I don't think they're gonna tip seal that road. That's gonna happen. Yeah, it's accessible, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, my main concern is the, the, the hearing that she, this individual's trying, she's offered, put in an offer to buy the road. And everybody on that, probably on that road is not.
He goes by the road.
Yeah.
They're actually bashing on the road because it's right within easements.
Right. There is an easement.
They're going to knock for sale.
Yeah.
Considerably, I've walked. The stepper of the road.
I've actually walked twenty feet on each side of the road for the easement. If you come down Benson, you know, if you're going down past, for the middle left, you can go straight, that looks like a driveway, but it's actually, it keeps going, it's a huge fern, and then you make a right and go on through the road fucking up. So there is an easement for that, but the easement's on private property, really, so it does not mean the county will approve it or, or whatever, but she can buy property around the easement, but it doesn't get rid of the easement. The easement just comes here.
It is their property for utilities or.
Yeah, yeah. In fact, you're right, the, uh, hydro, um, uh, the pipes go through there.
Okay. I'm gonna move on from this topic. We're gonna go to the next inquiry.
I, I can add something to that. It wasn't one I came here, I don't know this lady, but I, the street you have is go south from Rex Road.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I've had an encounter with the same person who I don't even know. I own the property across the street. It goes all the way to Edison, which doesn't go through. And what happened was she came on to my property and on this side of Benson, put yellow tape across and put a, a big sign that said, "No trespassing." So it's not a big deal to me, but it's like, you know, what arrogance to think that she could put no trespassing on site of my property beforehand.
Okay, so what are these?
It's a town territory.
Yeah, so what, what, so did you come to talk to us about today?
Well, of course, I understood what you're talking about on the Gulf Road.
Yeah, really?
I've been out of the country for a while. I just got back, uh, dealing with the case of belt policy, so talking is not too easy for me right now, but great guy, ninety percent of my muscles have come back. So I just wanted to give you a feeling for what my feelings are about the Gulf Road being a property owner on the Gulf Road and also a commercial, uh, person here. I think the problem with the section that deals with particularly Gulf Road is something that was a case where these brilliant people in the planning department decided a long time ago what it would look like, and it's impractical, it's not something that could be possibly done, there's too many things that have already been started, and I think the best thing you could do with the whole thing would be to forget the whole thing and make it no more restrictive on Gulf Road than it is on any other property in the commercial area. And I think there's a lot of room that instead of the county worrying about restrictions, they should figure about how, ways in which we can, they can help us with things that'll improve our ability to have other commercial space. For instance, the lots that are zoned commercially, I have across the street there, uh, it only goes back a hundred and fifty feet or so, and you can't put in a commercial facility and provide proper parking and subject field and all those kind of things within that thing. So I think that's outside of the Gulf, Gulf Road project, but that's where my heart is. If you want to build Gulf Road up, you need to look at the overall picture and whole commercial space, and in the meantime, don't throw any restrictions on Gulf Road. They're not a competition. What's happened in twenty years on Gulf Road has had a mind of its own and nothing, nothing has significantly improved there, and I don't think it's economically viable for anybody to come in and comply within, with the constraints right now to be able to make a successful business of.
Okay, do you mind if I go? So, um, 2072 is the Oakwood Roberts overlay that was put on top of Watkin County building codes, and that is those are the restrictions that are tighter gears in the west in Watkin County. Just so you know, those were developed and built by Point Roberts residents. They came together about twenty-five years ago and decided we needed these extra, including things like the parking, and it's broken down into numbers, 2072 dot one five four, 2072 dot one five six. Those are the issues we're gonna talk about today. Parking is, is definitely one of them, and the reason why this issue has come is because business owners and hesitant owners like yourself have come forward and said, "These restrictions are not working for us in this day and age. The vision that was, um, deciding on Point Roberts is not commissioned, this is how the property has become, so these are off hours, they don't fit." That is why we're here today, is to talk about potential changes to those codes. So we are gonna be addressing exactly what the concerns should have. I just wanted you to know that the county did come in and pose upon us a group of Point Roberts people, got together and made them up, and now we're just another group of Point Roberts people trying to alter them for today's living conditions and wear off.
But, I mean, in addition to that, uh, 2072, uh, has additional restrictions that they've placed on the small town commercial section in addition to what the county's small town commercial district allows for. So they designated this area as small town commercial, and then here at Point Roberts, 2072 special district, they added additional restrictions. What you're talking about are restrictions that are in place, I believe, in small town commercial, which is actually 2061, which we had no control over, so that's, that's county-wide. Uh, so if, uh, if we were to, for example, take all of the restrictions that we have on small town commercial on Gulf Road out, and it's not gonna address any of your concerns that you just mentioned.
Well, if 2072, there's some restrictions on what property, what things you can't do there.
Yes, well, I agree, but I'm just saying that, you know, setbacks, some of the setbacks, uh, a lot for 2072 are, are not in addition to what is already in small town commercial, uh, your hundred and fifty foot, et cetera, because of, uh, I believe the map on your particular property, um, your property goes back a fair bit, which is right across the street, you know, the community center here, and they say that the first hundred and fifty feet is commercial, but beyond that, it's, it's not, but, uh, I, we got no control over that because that's something they've established in.
But it does control what I possibly do.
Small, small town commercial definitely does, and what we're talking about right now is the restrictions and how we can deal with those restrictions and whether we can, uh, not legally, but, um, in a friendly manner within the community, be able to adjust those restrictions to make it more reasonable for business to be able to thrive and operate on Gulf Road within the small town commercial area. So we, you know, I agree with what you're saying, but again, some of those things are not affected by 2072, they're actually in the small town commercial, which you can't change, but we're gonna work with everything that's in the small town commercial. Is that reasonable to say?
Yeah.
Uh, Snyder, first name, Victor's the last name. Gulf Station.
I'd love to say that, uh, we in the, not this committee, it's a stellar, if you're greater, are thinking of ways to improve on this situation here to go outside of the zoning. The zoning here is our chance with that overlay to do better than what has been done. It's some really crazy stuff that should be removed, and then there's ideas of what I have to promote business, and right now, all we're doing is pulling those ideas together to draft something which, um, no doubt, we'll be able to see a copy of, or try to institute more in Republican, learn more what other ideas may be put in before we submit the county. And it's not said and so forever, they probably don't want to see us again for two years, but if we really found some stuff that was dangerously important to do next year, we could say anything that pays changes next year, too.
Yeah, this could be a several step process.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm happy to contribute some ideas, and I hope you were specific to, directed to what you're in control of right now.
Thank you for that, Bob. You're, you're essentially saying, well, you have property on road.
Yeah.
You wanna try and do something, so it's appreciated that in here, thank you.
You're one of our best customers.
Okay, are there any further public comments? Is anyone like to address?
My name is Lars Brumbeck, and I have an acre on Gulf Road, due to being an acre. And, uh, it used to belong, uh, before it was subdivided to be far in the, uh, I don't know, I think, more than fifty years ago. It was four or five acre farm, and then the farm was subdivided. It was an apple orchard, um, and, uh, it was commercial, they sold apples and other, uh, fruits. I required it for about, like, estimate fifteen, twenty years, and, um, I imagine for the after-hurter, um, questions, uh, yes, it is apple cider, and yes, all that trees have been grown, other smaller apple trees around it and so on, and, uh, it, uh, it has been commercial before, and, uh, but it's coming to zoning. If you're a conservative of Gulf Road, I feel it has been commercial in the past and it should be commercial now because it's fertile soil. It is the best soil you can have, old, uh, uh, from the old seed, more or less, long time ago, but it is, so to say, tree harder soil, uh, and many things could be grown, uh, and, but nothing, not much has been done in the past, and all the apples, what has been there, I guess, that the deer and coyotes have, and, and yes, I have picked it before, went down the road, but suddenly the fence was put up. And when I looked into what had happened in the past, uh, in the history, it was a ten feet of my property had been given to the county for road and for, um, for water line, for water main. And at my property, I was, I had a fire hydrant, and it was, uh, inside, and it had been a ditch, and the road went down, but then a doctor, I don't remember his name, but, yeah, he, uh, he mowed it, and, and what he did, he, uh, he closed off the ditch, and then he put the, the fencing on my side, and, and I went to him and poured, and he said, "Yeah, take me to court. You know it runs forty fifty thousand if you're to go through with it." And, and, uh, so I, I prefer not to go to court, um, um, it was another court case I was involved with up at three sixty-one, and that cost fifty thousand for each park just to get the walkway down to the beach. It was closed off suddenly for someone who said, um, "It's our walkway." He said, "Not." The developer who had developed the area and passed away and, uh, had made, um, an easement where everybody could go down to the beach, but then that easement was closed off. And, um, I felt the road had been going on the side for this, through the Gulf Road, and so after farm on, on the side for harbinger, suddenly it, this doctor put up a fence to block me off, I could not go into my property and taken the air by the, the deer and, and the hopeless habit. And, um, yeah.
What is the issue? Do you want that removed? What is the issue that we're talking about?
No, I, my issue, more or less, should be, if it is a fire hydrant there, and a fire taking place on the, on my property or the property to the east, which is, uh, now the fence up to here, about six foot fence, and the fire hydrant is there, so the firemen, the whole area is closed off now with the gate, so the firemen, they, they can't get the, if you take the fire on the property on the east side, they, they can't hook on anything to the fire hydrant without to cut out, cut out the fence. If they don't have keys to the gate and so on, it, it's a, it's a time-consuming issue. I, I feel the fire hydrant is there, ten feet or more than ten feet had been given on my acre for the purpose of, of road and, and, uh, to get the water line, and I felt, um, I should have access on the road because it had been accessed for, for more than fifty years before.
Is it on Gulf Road?
Yeah, it is on, on Gulf Road, yeah.
It's on the road goes back to the storage.
Oh, so it's on the, the driveway.
Actually, the person you need to speak to is Lauren Nielsen because he's the one that owns that property now, this town owns that, and he would be the one that would say, "Yes, you can cut through the fence to make an access to your property," but he owns the property. He bought it from the property.
Yeah, he, he bought it, yeah. He, he's, yeah, yeah. I think this, I mean, these people, where you say that they don't, they can't make their decisions. No. I know that Lauren Nielsen is the first one, I mean, what I just wanted to mention is that if it be a fire on the east side, the firemen should have easy not to cut up the fence. The fire hydrant was there to serve it, so fire could be, that fire could spread out the road.
Okay.
So the barbed wire fence, that's what it is, barbed wire?
Uh, this is changing.
Well, you know what? The fire department's got nine of those on that, right? If they have to, if they have to cut into it to get access to water, those are what they need to do. It's the same thing up Gulf Road around Tahiti on the other side of, on the, uh, east side. There's a fence along that, along, all the way up there, the, the fence by the seven yards up top.
The hydrant.
There's, it is, there's a barbed wire fence, there's a barbed wire fence there. The hydrants are on this side of the barbed wire fence, they'll have to go through the barbed wire fence to make the line.
Then it is also, yeah, on the road, it is a gate, so it, it is a gate about a hundred feet up from, it didn't used to be there, I mean, it is, uh, put, um, on this doctor, um, and, uh, I didn't want to go to court, I just, I just feel it should be more, the hydrant should be more easy accessible.
I think the simplicity of it is, uh, with every easement, and that's an easement to access that property, so they can legally access that property. There are agreements that go along with that easement, they're registered on the title of the property, and in those, in those titles, an easement, there's conditions. So the best thing to do would be to reserve the title. Find out what the easement requirements are and take it from there, because if they require to give you access to your property from that easement, or that easement is part of your property and you have a right to that easement, then you're not allowed to that, and, and that's really the simplicity, so you just have to reserve the title at the county courthouse with the auditor's office.
Uh, thank you. I haven't been doing anything about it, I just, um, it should be more, the hydrant should be more accessible, well, it should not be blocked off with a gate, the order we understand.
The other thing is that if they put that water line in, and I, I honestly can't remember if they did, but if they had to extend that water line down to that property and put a hydrant in, in order to meet the hearing examiner's requirements, then they paid for that hydrant, they paid for that water, it's not theirs, but they had to pay to put it in, there will be, again, conditions around that as well, because that easement is for the use of utilities, which being water, power, telephone, so you should have some recourse for your property if that is part, that easement is part of the law.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. I, I would also, but there are other, there are other processes adjacent to you, and also become.
Okay, George, we're gonna move on. This is the work session about 2072. Do you have any public comments?
Yeah, I'm just trying to give them a little bit of.
Okay, and maybe I can ask you to do that outside, because we have, we've got to move on. We've had two work sessions taken from us for, I mean, um, sort of, by our control. I mean, I'm doing some hide on this particular document, so if, if everyone has finished public comment, if that, if anything?
No.
We're moving on to work session. So I just, thank you all for coming, thank you all for sharing your comments.
And we're, we're.
Can I, can I, can I just have you do one?
Sure.
Um, the easement with Kelly was talking about, it is right here, and it goes, it's an easement after this home property is done on, and then it was an easement, oh, yeah, twenty foot easement after, so to say, the gun summit, it was, um, yeah, it's a question what arrived, the, uh, because right now this drainage has been let in to the Jonah Drive, and it has created the swamp. It's created a swamp for everybody here, which is not good when you send no inputs and so on and, and for use of the property. So this easement, the Jonah was blocked off, but also this easement and drainage had been blocked off, and a new drainage has been put into this side where it is not an easement.
This sounds like a similar situation to, uh.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna put a name down here. So I'm gonna put a name down here. And suggest that you get a hold of County Public Works and ask them to go to town because he's handling the other one that is a very similar situation where there's drainage issues. And he is the county engineer. So if he makes a call familiar with with the situation, that's the person you need to talk to. He's kind of as far as to go. Okay? Pardon me?
No, no, no.
We're just gonna be working here. We're not gonna be, we're gonna present, you guys don't exist. But we're gonna be working here and our coming on themselves.
Okay. Thank you. So back to the agenda, and we wanted to first talk about, seriously, do you think, do you think we need to worry to make up for, do you think you can get some of these work sessions?
I don't know. I'm trying to get those and add any water for these.
Okay, I have, I would agree with that.
I've done a tour of the town, but um, it's strong. Scheduled to come to the next meeting in this one. Directly.
So much stuff.
To help us out with anything, language, questions, but we don't have any subjects. I think it's the twenty something, I think I don't recall, I don't have my calendar. I don't want to break up here if we don't have anything to discuss, so. It's my suggestion, if we schedule another meeting in July, I'll check with them, the holiday schedule, so that we can do this the next work session, but we'll be productive. And then try and get him to deal with what we got. Because if we don't have anything to give him, we can engage him in a fruitful discussion. We're not gonna get into it. And you know, our time line is getting smaller and smaller.
I agree with that. Yeah, I think heads, heads down.
So I think, put our heads down, do what we can today for as long as we can. Uh, and then use the next meeting, again, as fruitfully as possible and as much as we can. And then I'll schedule, I'll find out, before our next meeting, when when Cliff is available in July, and we'll set up a meeting around his schedule so that we can have him come up and come over. I'd like him to, I mean, after, I asked maybe, if they can submit something, so that he can have a look at it, so that when he comes in here, he can say, okay. And then if we need to actually do anything, or if we need to say, okay, that's all we're gonna get done this year, let's get it through. What language do we have to make? Let's get on with it. We'll get the agenda for next year and, you know, maybe we pack some more of them extra. But I think we need to get the key points out.
Okay, so the next special meeting on July on twenty seventy-two is July ninth. Maybe you want to see if he's available to reschedule for that one?
July ninth, is that next meeting?
No. It's the next one after the June eighteenth.
Okay, July ninth, okay.
Because then there'll be a regular meeting and the next next special meeting, and then there'll be another regular meeting in July. And then there'll be the last one before we thought we were gonna try and submit. So see if he's available for July ninth. If not, we might have to bring him into our regular meeting on the eighteenth.
So of course, of course, if he's available, someday we can just have a.
Have a schedule.
Before we go to eighteen, then we commit that meeting to twenty seventy-two, while they know it's a regular meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, again, that way you get maybe a little more work done on July ninth's schedule.
I, yeah, that's sound more likely. Okay, so there you go.
Okay, thank you.
So back to where we left off on the.
We're following that.
I was right here.
Did you see the back of my head?
My question is, if we get to our initial points that we had scheduled to talk about, do we want to talk about the original document parking or talk about design guidelines? I came very prepared to talk about design guidelines, but I think only in, I mean, this is for all of us, in a high level sense. We could talk about it in a high level sense, get the gist of what we might want to do, not talk about the specific edits of the meeting.
Well, I know parking was brought up by a number of people at the at the meeting that we had here. And and we kind of, the flight group that said we weren't gonna deal with parking, I know we're gonna start beginning to move on, but I I I think it's important to, um, in retrospect, encourage these people to say what they have to say about the parking, so that we can, and I deal with what their concerns are. Uh, so, you know, I mean, I would, I would hope that they'll come back a few weeks, so that we can get an idea of what their concerns are.
And if we can advertise that meeting as simply about parking and parking out.
It could be a variety of things. It could be, you know, geez, I live on the front of the road during the summer months, people park on both sides and trucks can't get through and my UPS guy can't show up. It's not gonna make a difference about that. But if it's parking with respect to, you know, Gulf Road and where people can park and where parking is available, that's another story again, which we have to look at for for this.
I think restrictions for on-site evolved since that was high.
Yeah.
And they do have options of the twenty-five foot, that's set up back, right? That's on the commercial rate, and a twenty-sixty.
Yeah.
And then set a forty-five.
That's twenty-sixty. So I I think we're working on administrative approval uses.
Yeah.
We're on one thirty.
Yeah. We, as I recall, we, it was just Steve and me and myself, we, uh, and we had discussed, the administrative approval uses and costs associated with that. We brought up that there's a charge or a fee.
Yeah, which is outside of twenty seventy-two for the late. It's one of those things that we have to deal with, late. It's twelve hundred bucks.
And so it's twelve hundred dollars a year?
You do what? It's twelve hundred dollars a year. You only get six.
Yeah, I'm not seeing the whole picture.
Yeah, what the cost is for it.
Yeah, twelve hundred dollars for a year doesn't mean you can't, you still gotta have a subsidy system.
So this is with respect to a.
To have a.
Or this is a private, and you have a recreational vehicle park on.
Yeah, okay. And um and as I indicated, based upon employment issues, definitely, there is um some discussion that there are people that will come here for summer or particularly golf or hard-to-find places for rent. They could maybe rent somebody else's car, maybe just making this up, uh, but hasn't set it, but twelve hundred dollars to be legal for that is kind of a lot. So from an employment point of view, I would say drop it down to three hundred. The money doesn't come to this committee, that's for sure. Because in the twenty, I I think twelve hundred dollars is too, is too much. But, you know, obviously, we have to debate this, but it's not.
It's not the twenty seventy-two.
No, it's not.
No, but it relates to what we have to do. How, who, are they gonna, they're gonna ask the county to check it, but it's not.
Yeah, well, we say, well, because we're special, because we have a special.
That's what I do. Oh, you're gonna bring it in with us. You can have code.
Overriding the other.
You can have code. You can do that. You can have code.
Maybe we should, you know, here's, here's my position on that. I, I feel quite strongly that we shouldn't have people on Point Roberts. Real estate people or people coming down here with a vision that they can have an RV lot.
Not the garbage.
Buy a lot.
Right.
And just drive down here and throw an RV on.
You're saying no permanent?
I don't think we should have that.
Okay.
But I've seen token, you know, we've got some rules here that say, if you've got a lot and you hook it up to power and water and you put it in a set system. You don't have to build it up, we can even put an RV on it for a hundred to twenty days if it reaches four months, so you can breathe, pat, and camp. But you invested thirty thousand on a set system, you invested ten thousand, that would have to water, you've invested in only a few thousand to uh connect power. We already made investment. I don't see that the county should be realizing a fee because I don't know what the fee's for. What what does it benefit them?
Don't they have to do, like, a review or don't they have to, or a review process? Uh, a trailer will be sitting there, some sort of recreational vehicle, pulls out, calls it off.
No, that's, that's, that's not anything, it's in the administrative.
It's only to one thirty-five. Yep. Then it's laid out, recreational vehicles are allowed under these conditions to be laid out. Um, a hundred and twenty days.
A hundred and twenty days.
Providing that no accessory guest RV, so we, kind of how my.
So they can have a second RV, but for not more than fourteen days.
Yes, so we identify what a guest is. I mean, what if two families own the property? Which one's the primary owner is the second one automatically a guest when they both primary, they both can have RVs on their hundred and twenty days.
Probably one, the other one.
Becomes a guest. Uh, well, that seems rather restrictive, so I think we need a clearer definition, definition of that particular market.
More than a fee though, it is not a fee for, from a financial point of view, it may not just be there in a community, it's to discourage the activity. And and I, yes, and if one doesn't want RVs on every property, she, so she, there's no, no business in that, doing it. I don't want her six months of the year whether you pay enough legally.
So I think that, that's all, yeah. So that's a lot of money for, that's why I was thinking six months, four months, is that that's a lot of money for that and it discourages, the idea I talked about is some employment, seems to be a lot of people who like that. So this is a little balancing. But I I think I agree, Dave. I personally don't want to see, and this is what, back in the days when all this stuff was worked on, somebody said, we don't want to see a lot of RVs being what Point Roberts is. Unfortunately, a lot of the code didn't get changed or a lot of their football recently lives a couple of years above. So um um the code is pretty clear, it's not that bad. Um, I, if you agree, and I think you and I agree, certainly, I think everybody agrees, that we don't want to see RVs being a permanent living solution. Like, would they, to stay out loud, outlawed, um, nerds? That's a different topic. But still, we don't want to see year-round living in an RV.
No, and and, you know, as you read on, it states that, you know, that the RVs should be screened for neighboring properties.
Yeah.
Um, and it says, and that, it says, such screening may consist of landscape upper areas, name of vegetation or.
May.
I think it should. I think it should. I don't think it may, I think it should. Well, uh, the problem with that is if you live in a shelter, you live, you live to what you specified, and there's another good type, we may, we may just possibly expand the list if there's any other one. I'm hoping. Perhaps in a certain. However, it doesn't, it happens that if it is made, it doesn't, the barrier isn't optional, just the, oh, maybe the types of examples are optional.
Okay, all right. The the first sentence is Shelby screen. Yeah, that covers, because the county's got all kinds of rules and regulations to ask kind of our law right now about what kind of screening is allowed and there are options for that. I would see, say that actually that's a good way to do it. We could increase it, but the county's already got their ideas about what is legal screening? There's a couple of pages that they define that in other areas, RCWs and that kind of stuff, so, um, but they do say shut. So that's pretty strong, you know? You gotta screen it.
I like that.
You what?
I like well.
I know well.
Just like you're listening.
So I would say, that's not bad.
So I think we're in agreement.
Yeah, I think we're in agreement. But we do want to get some clarification on what the fee is for.
Yeah, and.
We need some stronger language to help us confirm that it's desirable, that RV year-round living is not desirable. What about people leaving when they're storing?
Well, I think that's something, there's something about.
You can't leave an RV if you don't have a home. It's all about having a home. If you have a home, you can leave your RV here ninety-nine days. Doesn't matter. If there's no home, then it's a four-month rule, that's it.
Right, right.
Those are the codes.
Otherwise, undeveloped property.
Yeah, exactly. Then they're situated about.
Okay, right.
And I think that's all right too, because, well, yes, no, because my concern is it now encourages creating a mess like you've got in the quarter, tiny mess.
It's all like, all our.
But that's.
I realize that, but you know, now that, when we go to that, that's not aesthetically appealing. It's, it looks like a job practice. It it lends nothing to the community. And so people bring their RV down here, they're on their property for three months, three months, four months, and they go market over there.
You know, it does not tear out the, well, I, I, I think it's, well, that's not terrible. He needs to create, and he did a more important than he would before he got out.
Very well, you know, I'm, I'm, while with that, it's, it, um, I just think it used to be a.
I mean, the thing is, there are store garages, those people are coming back here. And that's, it's a party.
Um, yeah, I don't want to discourage people from down there, uh, using their property. As I said, anybody that's gonna put in forty to forty-five, fifty thousand dollars into a lot, they might pay thirty to forty thousand on the door. I mean, they've done an investment. You know, hopefully they're taking care of that mess. They won't lose it for a, for a summer cap for that screen.
And they should comply to these rules and have to store their units somewhere. So I'm not in, in, I guess, the unit, the storage facility itself, just towels, put together and how it currently looks, they need so far and how he's supposedly working closely with him to keep him compliant to putting those screens in place.
Excellent idea. I'd really forget, and I learned this a little bit, that's, that is a piece of small-town vertical. And then, yeah, yeah, I think it was Cliff himself said that was, um, he looked and looked and looked and looked at a big meeting and it took them hours and they found it. It's in the code, and it's likely have, so it is a zone permitted use.
Yeah.
Um, it just therefore had to meet all the other requirements.
Of course, but you wouldn't be allowed to have that.
Yeah, if he had done all the other things, we wouldn't do it.
Okay, so then, on behalf of those that were not available, we jumped, we were going to this one thirty-five, two-seven, or eight, nine.
One second, one second, one second.
One fifty-one, one fifty-two, one fifty-three, oh, yeah, you better.
One thirty-five, yeah, lots of notes. Uh, what is, uh, increased shed storage square?
Two hundred.
Back to one thirty, same slope.
One thirty-five. One thirty-five.
Yeah, essentially, one thirty-five, thank you. Um, is increase that say of two hundred square, it is now to four hundred, that would reduce the pressure on having to have special lot space and store, more storage could be done. Uh, where some people, as I said, some people wouldn't like that because now suddenly they'll have a larger shed next to their house, and maybe they don't like that, so there's a minus on that. But that, I believe a lot of people would like an increased number of sheds. I know lots of people that have way more illegal sheds than they're permitted. There are a lot of people that have that safe. Otherwise, you gotta get a building permit and go do the thing.
Well, so again, if they need to get a building permit to build a larger shed, that's fine. Um, as long as the building permit conditions are such that they can build a shed that doesn't have, you know, walkers to order, or residents in it, because what happens is you get creeped. You go over twenty feet, all of a sudden, you have a home of putting two or three two-hundred foot, square foot pavilions on their property, and pavilions have any residences for their neighbors or share a creep. And so I think, I think that's the reason why that is there.
And it's probably a safety issue too, I mean.
Well, billions of people, really.
Yeah, billions of people, it's probably a safety. You know, you gotta show the building to, the building to have a hundred thousand.
They have, we're only, they have a code for, for building, for sheds. It's square feet, you can't have electrical, it can't have money, can't have sewer, all that. You can't live there. It's a necessary building. That's, it's all written down. And it can be just set on a lot, on blocks. Anything bigger or remain building, a concrete foundation or a legal foundation. And then, of course, you could make it legal with like, with water and all, you could keep going. But so shed is a definition of, it can just sit on the property, but have electricity. That's about it. It's a very simple thing, it's cheap, it helps, it helps Point Roberts, it has drawbacks, um, so I think it's also a good idea, so.
When I increase the size of the water feet, but I think that, I think that's code right now, it is.
Yeah.
So it is code, yeah.
So if if we, if we increase that, it's a longer personal storage building and requires more.
Like, if you have two to one.
Yeah, if you have the one.
This is what?
If you have two, two hundred square foot.
Yeah, that would bring.
At one bed inch.
Well, for me though, we can't sweep in a necessary period. That's the code. That's all written in there. It's not an art, first value, but I know I've studied this enough to know some of the ancient, you know, the spirit. So, um, I don't know, it's, it's a proposal. I'm not willing to it, I know they are.
Why don't we put a proposal increasing every one person to two person? Depends to two person, so that they, you know, they can keep their garden equivalent free from their attacking, so that it's not like that.
Okay.
But keep the word personal, and that was not.
Yeah.
A special, a special shed, okay. Okay, that's, that's a reasonable thing. And and again, I, this is where Cliff is gonna come in and say, he's gonna give like a ton of bricks under four or again, so it's a perfect thing to to.
Oh, that's great.
Number six, you thought that one I didn't like too, like you have an issue with it? Location to park underneath?
Six.
For the case of the, uh, arguments, I'm making a lot of assumptions, you're going to be setting backs now, just for some of that.
Well, I've got a check mark, but if we've already talked about this, like, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that we're okay with that. And by the way, you notice when we read these, these ordinances, especially in certain places where it's tender, that has to do with state. That means that, that if we try to change that, it'll also find state laws. Yeah, yeah, so we see a ton of those, it's, it's like usually trouble for.
Okay, so seven is already checked off.
Okay, so leave it. Okay, so around the fifty minute?
I guess it uses.
Yes.
It's a lawn.
Oh, here's your notes. They're underlined. I couldn't understand it now.
Yeah.
I just had to read.
Sorry.
Okay, initially is it? All right. One fifty-one.
Oh, yeah, sports betting.
Yes.
Sports betting, one fifty-two. I know this is only Joel's, but this is Joel's property. At least that's I think.
Yes, it's the only property that has that.
I think it's safe. I don't think Joel would be upset. What do you think? No, not?
Joel's property.
Not after James went to Florida.
Yeah.
Always has a lot? Oh, I didn't know that. Okay.
Well, after June twenty-fourth.
Yeah, yeah.
You're looking at one fifty-two?
Yes, yes, sir. One fifty-two.
So one fifty-one. Uh so yeah, twenty-seven to one fifty. Yeah, one fifty-one was the hotels and motels and sports betting.
There it is. But you don't say want to add or.
Try to add sports.
Yeah.
Oh, one fifty-two. You heard this one fifty-two was for the sports betting.
Oh, one fifty-one. No, that's mine.
Must be one fifty-one, but you're going to say one fifty-two.
One fifty-four, or one fifty-four. Yeah, one fifty-four. You wanna add, you wanna add not having sports betting. You wanna add.
We do, I think we just need to straighten that.
But it was off-site betting anyway, so it's okay. Who has a problem with that? It's not gonna be a facility where my.
One fifty-four. Why would I use one fifty-four?
It was listed at one fifty-one.
Oh, yeah, I think it was a work reason.
Yeah, it's still it is.
But work reason is already been a part of ours since nineteen thirty. What's wrong with it?
We talked about code code coming up, right? So Mrs. Parker, do you care about cleaning this code up? We'll leave it.
Okay, we're moving off. Well, you know, it's a kind of like removing off developed road, especially in a small town commercial district, San Peters. Is it gonna happen?
Right.
So.
So didn't you hear how saying you have sports racing facilities for?
Well, this this is private commercial sports facilities and others permitted, and it shall include horse racing facilities. Uh, you know, the Strongback family who came up here to to try and promote this, and it was done because of the Asian invasion in the Oregon. And it was done because they were not able in Canada to vet parimutials. And Strongback family was out of Toronto, but they all had an EDA and many other parks. And so they thought that it would be great to have Point Roberts as a place to have them. And they referred to as picnic races, so they could set up a temporary facility and they would pull horse races twenty-four days of the year or twenty-one days of the year, and that gave them the ability to have a parimutial betting. Or a five, so people could go to the facility and vet, but they had to have a place where they could race horses.
Joel's property is perfect for that.
So they would go to certain places with tables in and also.
I don't know. I don't have school.
No, no, you would not have a.
But it hasn't all changed.
But they still get the horses, yeah.
In in Canada, the the lottery foundations have found a way to make it work. So they now have parimutial betting. So it's no longer an issue.
So should we describe that?
I I mean, there isn't a need for people to be there, but they don't need to ruin it either. I mean, we can say that uh private commercial sports facilities plus permitted as conditional uses.
Yes.
And then you don't have a horse race shall include horse racing facilities, parimutial way to way through.
You're saying that's a sick thing? It's like the whole second.
I mean, it does recruit people from that, of course.
Because you said they have private commercial sports facilities and plus as permitted under conditional uses. Fine, I'm gonna gonna strike out the line and just the line.
Yep.
Not the. Okay, so the ones, we we jumped to one fifty-four because of the line, but everything else before one fifty-four was fine that I could see. I've got check marks at one fifty-one, one fifty-two, one fifty-three.
The airport.
So one fifty-four, so one fifty-five, uh dry bulk storage is fine. It's got much more to this. So.
I looked at the whole airport and it's in more than one place and twenty-seven two. And as far as I can tell, it's something that I I I couldn't find anything that first line thought, we gotta change it. It'd be nice if it could actually turn into something useful on the other side. So leave it all and hopefully maybe we'll find some developers, maybe these people that buy it, who really wanna do something with it, because it's a lot of valuable property, a lot of good things. It has to be area-related, but that actually covers pretty wide swaths of businesses and related things that we can do. So um it seems good to leave it all and so.
Yeah, for sure. That's right. Sure. Okay, so Linda, that to me looks like we're moved down to twenty-seven to two hundred prohibited uses.
Yes, it's where we're at. Go get the bus.
I think it's more wider. Um but I think the first one or two looks good and then I'm sure about the question five, third one, I think.
Yeah, the first one is uh service stations involve, except except the station, the extension.
Is it, did they really do that as far as, I thought it was part of the licensing thing where the county says no more licensing? Is it a code thing? Is it a own thing?
No, it was a community that came together and said, no, there's nothing. We've got people running down here to buy gas and it's all they come here for. And we've got the same situation happening with parcel services now. First one from a business standpoint, I have an issue with anybody who owns business property or a commercial business being told that they can and can't use it. Um but in case of service stations, I think there's a lot of EPA issues and other issues, ecology issues. Also, this is, it's been on worker advice, where I was in thirteen hundred percent, you know, having fire taxation that is a little bit of over. We're not even incorporated, so.
Yeah, I think you're right. We would well know at this point, but yes. Okay, so two oh two then. At least two hundred long, two oh one long?
Two oh one.
A two oh two. Prohibited. And and didn't we have a big issue with the Maple Beach?
This is a resort promotion commercial district in Maple Beach area, obviously. It essentially says ruining houses, taverns, commercial parks, lodges.
I think that all power in the city would put a tag down there.
Well, I mean. I don't know. What's what's. What's a ruined house?
Yes, I know.
Is that an ERBO? Is that an Airbnb?
They're B and B, isn't it?
Yeah.
Or.
So does that mean?
It's a small hotel.
I would, I would use this other terms you used, like hotel is.
Yeah.
People always use this.
I don't think a ruined house is a hotel. I think it's a place with a bunch of rooms, each one individually.
By the.
Like a girl broke.
Possibly, possibly.
Yeah, I think that's amazing. That would be a B and B.
But that may be, that may be the closest to a ruined house, right? I think.
But we're gonna jump on that. I'll reach the definite if you want it. Okay, a private house in which rooms are rented from living are seen temporarily.
Right. Okay, you know, Maple Meadows, where the uh growing open, it was a Maple Meadow bed practice and it was considered a bed practice. There was a dollar sheet with that.
Yeah, I think it's a lower contention.
Turns out four individual rooms are wanted to be built.
Now, we've got a lot of interest from Maple Beach. Um there are other issues like the wall to do. Maybe we should um consult with it. Would you like this to remain? Would you like to add to it or?
I think I think we should put it up there, maybe communicate with the people, the doctors above the uh.
Okay.
Above the uh the wall, the C-wall and see if there's a, if there's an application that to.
They have an association.
Because, you know, parking lots, I don't know about commercial parking lots versus county-owned. Commercial parking lots are garages. Well, that's the thing we're talking about here on Gulf Road is having, and it's allowed and encouraged to take a lot and turn it into servicing more than a business, which will help us here on Gulf Road. Parking, parking. So here here uh it's prohibited. How many businesses do they have down here? They're residential. Well, people, well, people in the summer are always complaining that the visitors take up their own parking lots. It's a big deal.
We're always bringing, the county's making public parking available on the roads down there in order to accommodate people visiting off the beach. Which seems to have sort of gotten the ire of the the people down there, at least the ones that have a partner that owns their homes.
Yeah.
But there's also issues down there with parking. Because the street's narrow and they're not facing that moving forward through the summer with with the garbage collection. I think they also know that trucks that have to get down the roads and, you know, they're going down there, going down and, you know, there's garbage park and it's, you know, the car park on both sides of the roads, you can't get through sometimes, so. I think we, I think we should throw that in there and see what they say.
Okay.
I'll make the note to get a hold of it.
Oh, wait, please.
Rabbit?
Oil.
Oil.
Remember, there used to be a nice restaurant here, the time when you were back in old private home. I don't know if you call that a tavern. Was that prohibited?
No, actually, they were trying to put a tavern in that building.
Power.
Not followers. It was Jim Madden, but he had, the Williams was still around.
Oh, so wait.
I'm talking about the eighties. We did put a tavern in there and the uh the community got up in arms and that could probably wipe this.
That's probably why. They will never have taverns in our area. But okay, well, then maybe they can feel that way, so.
All right, I'll get a hold of him and uh also get a hold of Paul Townsley, because I want to see what they have to say.
Okay.
Let's get out of the most intact system.
Maybe storage facilities.
Small town commercial zone district along Gulf Road.
Prohibited. But we have them. How do you prohibit something?
Again, here's my concern. How do you tell somebody?
Whether they can be a recreational property.
That is the nature of zoning, guys. That's what we're gonna do with zoning. That is exactly why you have.
I don't agree. I mean, we have people here who made comments that there should be no more mini storages in Point Roberts.
Yeah.
Uh because the two hundred yards away and the run over here.
But what is where? I mean, that's, it's a decision. It's not, it's not for two people in Point Roberts, for three people to say, we don't want to have it anymore.
No, I I agree. The community's not for the current now, and they get it properly, put it into the zoning. That's exactly what zoning is for, is to say, you know, no, no porn sites, even a few hundred yards of a school and no, no risk for that.
And the things that you do with zoning to control property uses of individuals on their own would eventually just bottom out and the community would be unhappy. And maybe we got happy with that, but nobody ever stops it. So you're trying to stop it ahead of time. So you say, I need storage. Okay, well, after you've left it all the blocks.
Does that mean that a mini storage company can't buy a piece of property?
Uh, yeah, well, it just brings up to the.
No.
And then they get in trouble when they go to the planning department, the planning department says, well, thank you for buying us, but no, you can't do what you're trying to do.
Here's my concern. Apparently, and this is just apparently, it's my last guess, there's a need for mini storage in Point Roberts.
Apparently, no.
And multi-use, as Justin was saying, you know, supporting small businesses and all that.
Yeah, not just just mini storage, but storage. There is a need for it. There's a need for it because there's properties here that are small. There are restrictions on it. You can do on your own property, uh which is back to commercial vehicles, trailers, containers. Not that everybody pays attention to that, not that everybody cooperates in order. So. I don't know if mini storage is the right word. I don't know how I know that. I know that this one back here was put into a conditional experiment. They made applications for it. They went through all over and there and they got their application and they.
Despite the.
Despite the back.
Dr. Dowell.
Yes.
Uh, I talked to him and at length about what happened in the fight and he went into, he had two lawyers, and he tried to, what they agreed to, and this is sort of one of the same. Because it's back from Gulf Road. Yes, it's on Gulf Road. The matter is, he's Gulf Road guy. No, no, I'm back from Gulf Road. So they kinda didn't, they kinda schmoozed it. We can look, my opinion, we can legitimize them to say, you can't have any storage visible to the street, say a hundred fifty or a hundred fifty feet, like. Something like that allows, you know, uh the uh Martin's place there, or it legitimizes the Dr. Darrow's whole place with Martin, also the place on on what's the sign? Lord's Bank.
Yeah, I'm just waiting, but.
So that we can legitimize it, but don't prevent anything new and also handle uh fourteen eighty. But saying if you really wanna have storage there, we just don't wanna see it from the main street because this is supposed to be our downtown.
And so that's a little point. And you know what? I think that is a common theme that we have. It's, it has to be aesthetically pleasing. You know, I had the discussion with uh the lady, the uh enforcement officer, who was in there, who was staging that.
Oh, Susan.
Susan. I had a conversation with her and I talked to her specifically about fourteen eighty Gulf Road and what the concern was there. And I was very specific about it. I said, you know, I don't know, if you sit on this board and we'd like to know what's going on with that property. Isn't just the parking? No, no, we were called there for something completely different and a parking came up. It's sort of a secondary issue, I said. Okay, so when you looked into the trailers of the park there, I said, did you keep one arm like this so you could just see little trailers? Or did you look over there and see that there was three more trailers, two containers, and a dump truck, and this and that definitely? And a whole pile of trailers to behind it. That's on our radar. We're in enforcement. We only have so many people. I don't want anybody getting in the trouble here. I mean, that's the the reason that they had to go to on that park in fourteen eighty, that code. It's for the reason of the parking, I think, is to take those, it's, but it's in code and she's just enforcing the code. And that that's her job. But it also affects other people on Gulf Road. And the funny thing is that fourteen eighty Gulf Road is a fairly deep property. Property next door is a fairly deep property and there's two properties that behind that, two actually smaller properties. But those two small properties also fall into small town commercial. Which is odd because they actually go as far back as the Georgia Way uh mini storages that aren't in small town commercial. They're completely outside small town commercial. It's kinda, it's it's like this. Um we wanna make Gulf Road look aesthetically pleasing to people so that they're not seeing trailers, set pick pumpers, what have you. But we've only got a few places where we've got, you know, solid ground, uh car wreck, national. And that was doing the spots. Now, you can sure move the set pick tanker up to the side arms, but you can put it in there, but you're not around gravel. And and so if there's any spillage, you know, it may not get picked up directly in the hay. It fails if they've gone around the tanker. It'll seep down into the ground. Whereas here, it's a solid, impervious surface. So it just goes in the hay. It's not, it had any issues, but you don't have to keep the health department. So if we can find a way, as Steve said, the hundred fifty foot setback, to put up fencing, landscaping, something that is aesthetically pleasing that blocks that. We can take advantage of those properties that they're not using for anything else. And the ground hundred fifty feet, we have parking issues on Gulf Road. You know, in order to make this workable, allow parking for people on Gulf Road. To be able to park there and let them park to. But well, no, I mean, it would be up to the owner, but we can say, hey, listen, you know, I mean, it's gotta be a quick profile. We can do this for you, but you know, you're in an after office of this. Now, the other issue is related strictly to the building, residency in the building. So they're not our issue. Our issue, I think, is that our community back and.
Well, I don't, I don't mind the idea of creating a way that it works without the property. So what we're talking about doing is if we remove, we're saying, the prescription on on, first of all, we still have storage, is it the storage?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, what I did.
What you would say is all of a sudden, many stores are blow up there. And I don't, and I don't, and I don't, many stores, I I don't disagree with you because I don't wanna see that happen either. I mean, we've got one on the store.
It it's still happening if.
Well, maybe, but we have three on the road. Really, realistically.
York is.
If you count them all, realistically.
Actually, no, we've done work for you. We have a lot. You don't see them up over here and over there. And they they have aesthetically blocked uh the storage from from the scene. And so nobody knows if it is, but some of us. The storage facility, the rest of them are being stored on mini storage. They're they're living on mini storage with containers, trailers, what have you. They're just, you know, you know, panic, you know, you can call it whatever you want, it's a mini storage. Uh but I don't think we wanna be specific to one property. I think we have, we've got a plan with a broad brush and if we say a hundred and fifty foot setback on Gulf Road.
With aesthetic screen.
Aesthetic screen uh to to prevent people from being able to say this. And I would, I could address this um to to Tyne as well, small, prior to small town commercial, not just, and this is the frustrating part. This is, it says, small town commercials only, a long Gulf Road only. I think we need to include Tyne.
At.
And how does that mean?
Because that's your main road. Why is this road any different from that road? Because it's less than that. Well, you know, there's cars. They're not gonna develop a lot coming down the road to the gas station.
No, but I can see a number of harsh storage unless it's too wet.
Yeah, it's a thing.
Well, it's too wet, but it's a guy. Well, the market, you might worry about that heavy lot behind.
Well, and you know, I I can be very candid with you and tell you that I know the owner of that property. Uh it was bought at auction by Todd Van Allen and by Jason McDougall. And I believe Todd has sold the upper part to Jason. And I believe Todd has sold the upper part to Jason McDougal, so we don't post it to both of them. And, uh, you know, he wants to do something for the community, and he wants to find a way to, to mitigate, he also owns the old gravel pit. In the northeast corner. Uh, sorry, central, central east corner. Uh, he, uh, he wants to do something to mitigate and create a lake up there and do development around lakes, and create a wetland up there. And offset it, so that he can do something on tiee. So there is a desire to do something on tiee down the road for him, but I think that those places should have, have, be, but they're small round commercials, so I think they should have to meet the same criteria.
Yeah.
Because I think that the, the mini storage needs to meet that criteria.
Well, I wouldn't encourage, I wouldn't, I wouldn't take steps to encourage more mini storage.
Oh, no, 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 I'm not saying, I'm not saying, I'm not saying mini storage, I'm saying anything that we do with this section. I don't have a problem keeping mini storage facilities out of that, out of this area. I mean, there's no other areas for them to go. There's no other commercial areas for them to go, other than.
Well, I know, tiee, we could put them on tiee.
Well, but if we include this along Gulf Road and tiee, if we take out along Gulf Road alone and say small town commercial district, that takes that whole thing out of there.
And we're talking about not having the, the location on mini storage on tiee. So that would also not, I mean, not all of it, that would also not be on tiee as well as not.
The, the, you know, this is a prohibited section, so we would not use, we would remove it from, from the, and we would put it back in, allow uses in the small town commercial area with a fifteen hundred, with setbacks.
That would be allow a whole.
No, I, I, I don't want to allow on.
No, we were just talking about allowing the setbacks and aesthetic screen.
That was storage, not like mini storage versus storage, I, I'm talking about. So, mini storage, because I don't have an issue, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't know what you were.
Are you on number three?
I, I, I'm still, I wonder if I've been bouncing around.
Okay.
Okay, you're working about, now, commercial storage.
I, I jumped over to, to say that, um, the initial two of course said the following uses are prohibited in small town commercials, home district, along Gulf Road only. I would like to cross that out completely and say in the small town commercials.
Yeah.
Again, we wanna take mini storages and, and leave them as a prohibited use, fine. Animal kennels.
You do.
I, I haven't had to do, but, but you may not agree.
Well, I thought we were talking about trying to legitimize the ones that are in this here by removing this from the prohibited section and putting it back in, you, allow, mini storages are allowed with certain setbacks, I'm not designing setbacks right now. And this, and, and aesthetic screening. I thought we were removing it from prohibited.
I, I, I don't think we're talking. I like the list of, of, of.
Usually that would encourage more mini storage.
I think, I think in this community, the only thing that keeps things, well, it doesn't actually do things, that doesn't really happen legally, but the only thing that keeps things happening probably are things like this code. So if you remove a prohibition on mini storage, people will be like, oh yeah, I should make money with mini storage, and so.
Then what if the, um, uh, enforcement department finally gets enough budget to start enforcing, and they shut down all the mini storages we have in the community?
Well, this is one area, this kind of area that's been, has been prohibited.
And legitimized.
So we, one survives.
Because, as Justin has pointed out, that there is a need for, um, mini storage facilities for a lot of small businesses. They operate, their, their, their gear, their equipment, their landscaping, whatever their business is in storage areas, because they can't keep it there.
And, and this is also something that we brought up, and I also spoke with Chris John, though, and it would have to be, uh, actually a code change within the Locken County Code in that respect to zoning overlay. In that there is only one area right over here, which is the light industrial area, where that's kind of where it is. And to look at how we can find another area within Point Rockers that's not going to affect residential people and be able to put in buffers and create an area where we can store commercial vehicles. And, uh, you know, equipment, because, you know, right now we have, uh, I would say we probably got somewhere between twenty and thirty, I had others that are storing heavy equipment on their own property, it's residential property, and I don't care if it expires, and acres or several lot, it's happening. Because they don't have.
They don't have another choice.
There, there isn't a choice, and then these are the people we depend on to work on our properties, uh, to, to fill.
Fill their block.
All of those things. And that really fun area that is maybe conditionally permitted, and that's, uh, the county works area. And this area over here, and so Jeff and Alther sold that property, or Tom sold the property over there, they still own the store commercial property here. So now it's not as excavator, it's not for the park. You know, what someone brought up, and then who's complaining about? And, but where else can we put it? So one place where we could put it.
So, I think, there was a meeting, and, and that was brought up, and, and so, um, uh, Kay and, and Allison all carried a book, talked to Jeff. And basically Jeff said, you know, go away.
I don't care if it's.
So officially, unofficially, sorry.
But, you know, how, how can you, you know, go after one person without going after everybody? You know, like, there's a lot of good parties, but again, we depend on these people, so, you know, I didn't mean to take away from what we're talking about, but that, that was the idea, was to try and create an underage, that's something for excavator.
Yeah.
And they did a proposal similar in all this, that, that we look at, allowing people to have, you know, one truck and one machine in their own driveway, if you will. Okay, that's not a business. You can't turn your thing into the so-called excavator business and have people coming twenty-four hours a day. You have to park it on your property, maybe that's legal. Cause a lot of people do that, they have their, their, their large truck, the full truck parked in front. And, uh, even if they have legal, it would, it would make way to help with that.
And, and I think that's a question we need to propose to them, as, and I don't know where that would fit into the state business.
Well.
We're still on, we're still on the small town commercial.
Right, right.
We're, we're.
Do we have a question here?
Can I make one small, very, very.
Thank you very great.
Very, very great.
Thank you.
If we use the language and say no more, no additional mini storage situations in the small towns on, that pretty much covers it. You don't want any more gas stations, and that's a limit. You could just limit it to what is now in your coverage. Does that make sense?
It does, it's a great suggestion. And the, the thing on, if you get the service station, basically says, no more, you know, and, and the ones that exist, you can, you know, you can expand or whatever, whatever the language is there.
Right, I don't think that's, um, that's part of the question, actually.
Okay, so rather than, again. Just for mini storage? Or, Justin, well, that's how you open, um.
Mini storage, that's a different story.
Yeah, the storage we're going, is, um, that we were talking about is the, is, how do you put it, storage, right?
Well, I mean, cars, vehicle storage. Mini storage is stuff, vehicle storage is vehicles, but a trailer or a truck, so one versus.
RV, one versus three.
Yeah.
So.
So then, then mini storage would come out as prohibited, and we go in the allow, just all the definitions.
Hopefully we would go, well.
Oh, no, I see, I see.
Well, we, the case prohibitive is, as additional mini storage facilities are, are prohibited.
Additional, that's a good one. Ooh, yeah.
That's what I was. One word is a picture.
Quick code word, it's just one word, all we do is do that.
And still do the setbacks and screening, that kind of.
Absolutely, absolutely. I, I think that has to be, and you know, if you go to small town commercial, it's required.
Yeah.
In small town commercials, it is required.
Now, the big sticky widget is number three, motorized vehicles.
Yeah.
Do we have any issues with the animal kennels?
No.
Do we want to leave that?
So we're still.
Yeah.
That's hard for a veteran. And that's only in.
But that ought to, but that ought to come down here and sound, might as well be great, but.
No, wait, we just said anti-e. We just said golf and tiee.
He said small town commercial, period.
Yeah, small town commercial.
Right, good point.
But animal kennels, I mean, so an animal kennel, like an ordinary boarding house with pets, would not be allowed here.
Yeah.
Has, has there ever been one here?
No.
I think there was one, I have to, I think there was one, maybe you scanned it, they must have thought I turned it.
Okay.
They would like it, some people would like it because of the issue with the animals, you know, animals, proponents and lovers. Like, if you happen to sit in on, on the hearing, and he was going over a hitch bike over an animal kennel, it went in theoretically legal, but then all the neighbors went up and on it. They turned out to be fully legal, even though they were, call it a quarter acre away from any other neighbors. This is not quite, because the animals are so loud, even though they have, you know, they have. But then they looked at it, somebody went up and mentioned it and said, I'm sorry, it still is code that they're allowed, even though it's allowed to you, means you gotta go, I could change the code too much for you. But it was a huge fight, so, it, pro con.
Finally, please, let it. So back to what we were saying.
Yeah, that's sticky, really sticky.
So, uh, what I've gathered out of all the conversations, that this is what we need to strong, because if it is prohibited, where do all our service providers partner here?
Yeah.
So what, what can we do?
But, but.
Well, this is, I was saying, there's no other place in Point Rockers to put, to accommodate, to light, like, a place like the one, the light, uh, the one. Right, right now, there is, that is the only.
There was the only one, is there another place on the, on the point that can actually stand or have that?
There, there is, and, and it's up by the transportation, the road, like, between Witten, Development, Town, Transportation.
Yeah.
Down off the air, it's a bridge on the heart concrete, it's, it's to the west, so the transportation west. Uh, Witten, there, there are some large lots in there, now, but here's some people have off the, and, and, nobody that I know.
But that's for sport.
Well, no, that, this would be for other owners, or, maybe, that sort of thing, that would be a, a good area to propose. I don't know what's involved with that, that's something that the county would have to deal with, when I get involved, because, you know, you get people screaming conflict and interest and what have you, but it's, it, they're deep enough properties that you could have a setback, and, you know, have a look at it by, on Google Earth, and there, there, there's setbacks, you can have a handful of offerings, so no one would know.
Right, it's next to the dump, and it's all the way, and Wendy Tower, that's perfect.
Oh, I mean.
It's the dump, you're not the dump, it's the dump. So, hey, it's between.
Yeah.
The saddest thing is, I think, that we might have that.
But I would say, I'd approach to removing restrictions. I would not propose to have that, that kind of, that in storage. On, on Gulf Road.
Yeah.
But I think you could have a limited amount, for example, what we've got right now. I mean, until such.
Yeah, I mean, behind, if we, if we find a way to fix warrants, pardon the line.
Well, if you want to, to bring that back, and you want that concrete back here too. You know, which, which has the mini storage, and he has, you know, oaks, and there's our, and he's in there, uh, and, and they have off the right in front of it, that's fairly deep as well. That could have a setback with him, and they could put something back there as well, and you wouldn't be able to see it at all. Uh, so, I mean, it's not, uh.
This is.
I, I don't want to take away from the idea that Gulf Road is, is our, is our small town commercial area, I think we have to have, based on the Gulf Road, something that is appealing, that are storefronts. Eventually, if we, if we can get to that, I don't think we want to take away from that, but certainly, in the interim, we can always reinstitute something like this with code change beyond the road. But I'm saying, for the time being, until we can have time to breathe and find this other area and create a proper district where we can do something properly for the community. Uh, we should try and restrict the ability for, you know, people who are there, uh, people who need to be there, from being able to park them. As long as we have a proper buffer, so that we don't have to see it. And that goes, like, for fourteen eighty Gulf Road, it goes to the property next door, as long as they put up a buffer so that we don't see that stuff, where else are they gonna put it?
Yeah, okay, then we can put them to three, because the sticky, well, that's what we want. No, no, in a way, you're talking about sport.
We're talking about storage, you're right, you're going to come in, well, it's like we're reading.
Uh, we're, uh, vehicle service, and, and here, washing facilities and commercial, like, commercial storage, or sale, okay, now. Fine.
All right. Very much, I hope we were able to help you out, direct you.
Yeah, good luck.
Well, yeah, thank you.
That's a sticky issue, we understand.
Expensive one, too.
Oh, oh, sorry, on, on three, I, one thing I would give, actually, nothing to do with changing that, I'm at this point, but if you change the structure of that sentence, you can actually tell what it's about. I mean, if you, if it started out with, um, the very first one, where you have those storage facilities, so number three started out with facilities for so, big, vehicle, no, not vehicle, no, facilities for service repair, washing, of all those types of things, and then, and then something about storage, I think it would actually, I don't think. Yeah, it's a bringing jungle, it's a jungle for.
I agree, can you break it up?
Yeah. But, okay, can I?
Are we getting any more repair stations?
No, I don't, I don't. We only have, we only have.
And I don't think we should, I don't think we should change, change repair facilities, I don't think we should change RT.
But wait, you tell me, this is something we're, we're anticipating enough. If Dennis goes out of the business, let's, let's unplan it for the big, whatever. And, and so, the business license is gone, this is what, um, um, what's his name, the passing of the business license. If the business license is gone, I mean, a new guy can't go in there, and hopefully that's Joe Loth on those.
Right, yeah, I mean, technically, that's, that's.
Because of this.
That's exactly right.
So even that place is there.
Right now, so where he could use his grand property, is that true? So, so if it ceased to resist, and then somebody wanted it ten years later, or five years, two years later, you know, back in, next to it, they would have to get.
I think we need.
Be outside, uh, repair service place, we need.
I don't think that, it, well, it was on the same location, but the hearing is down, I mean, it was like, condition.
I think it would be easy to get a permission again, but, but, but.
But it has to be a frame.
Steve is right, right now, it's, it's, it's not permitted, so it's, by the way, technically, it wouldn't, they only, it wouldn't be able to come back by right, you'd have to come back by, by, you know, variance or, or a flight.
But if somebody buys that property, and then a mechanic moves to town six months later.
Right, it's probably, it's a little bit of a bump, but, but then after, maybe you have a motion for conditional use.
Right.
Uh, but, you know, I mean, that's fine, I mean, I think it's been a, a servicing location since, uh, early seventies. Uh, there was a house actually, a little property, there was some, lived in a house, and his mechanic shop was in black, he was required permission, and he serviced our fire trucks. Um, which, you know, would be good.
So, a A word.
Yeah, we pay a war, and he was a fire technician. That was the old days.
Wow, if you pay a fire commissioner for service in the truck.
Well, that was the old days.
Wow.
There was also a cigarette, uh, they, 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 they stamp, stamp, tax stamps on the cigarette package there, and we sold them.
Oh.
Yeah. So that's how the making cigarettes got down there, and, and some of the dudes, and smoking and stuff like that. And it was, uh, I ordered to, um, uh, when it became, uh, point of use, which was the battery business.
Oh.
So it's, it's added to, like, in creation, then.
But you know, the only thing, to Steve's point, the only question being, one, one, I'm not sure, I, I would mostly want to do it for the whole section, but, but one could, yeah. Would you say they only, you know, other, like, you did, no addition, no additional.
Yeah.
Door has, has sales to the property, so someone at the door, he's in for that.
Well, I could say, you know, if it said no, if it said no additional, right now we have one, and if we had, there was a one, it wouldn't be a location, it wouldn't be a location, but I'm, I'm happy to keep it in the way this, because this grand pop in. Who all knows where else we're gonna have, I probably don't, but if it's right there, again, two years later, if, you know, they probably would get approval. But that, but the simple, one approach would be, though, to make it, to make it a no additional against service station, uh, service or recovery, or make it a conditional.
I mean, how do you see breaking this sentence up? Because I agree, this sentence makes really no sense.
Well, I, I wasn't, I wasn't thinking of, I'm literally breaking it up, but I was thinking about, uh, where did I, you know, that? And it really doesn't say what it says, the following uses are prohibited in small town commercials, home district, and Gulf Road. Motorized vehicles and equipment.
Right.
That's, and what is that?
What does that mean?
Well, what does that mean?
The easiest way to, I, I thought the easiest way to make it read clearly was to say, instead of starting with it, say, facilities for the service, repair, washing, commercial storage, or sale of motorized vehicles and equipment, motorcycles, regular farm implements, mighty heavy equipment, and recreational vehicles, so you, so you say upfront, what kind of facility it is. And later on, you specify what all those items are, and drive up to the types of vehicles. So just say, it might, it might very quickly, this, this, mini storage facilities, because you have to prove, you could, yeah, facilities, facilities for the storage, you can say it's standard.
Yeah.
So facilities for the service, repair, washing, commercial storage, or commercial sale, so card, card you would.
Is that all you received from the last, the last, after the paragraph, after the washing facilities, it says, commercial storage or sale?
I believe that's what, that's, that's what I drove, yes, for the other one, it's very strange, why it's even in that.
I think the word facilities, though, the way you're adding to it at the beginning, even further, uh, creates another loophole.
Really?
Yeah, because right now it says, the following uses are prohibited in small town commercial. Motorized vehicle equipment, motorcycle equipment, blah, 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 commercial storage or sale. So all these things were so, they can be naked stored out, it can't be naked stored out there, if you change it to the word, facilities for all these things. Now it's the facility that's back, not the thing.
Well, you could make it properties for, I mean, it, it would be, I, my intention with all the naked storage, it's taking the same language, it's written right there, and it's not going to, because it makes more sense. So you're, I mean, you're concerned, right, you're concerned that somebody could say, this is not a facility.
It's not a facility, it's just a naked extractor.
Piece of property, without, it's, it's, yeah.
So, like, what, what would you propose in a way of language that would? And here's what I'm trying to get to, is, is to allow the storage of those trailers over there, uh, the storage of the containers on the property next door. Uh, those are, I, I consider those commercial storage.
Right.
Uh, for example, Bob Gill used to have his, uh, his little dump truck and, and tractor park there. Uh, to allow those types of uses there, and again, th- this is something that, and I, I might say. Uh, to allow those types of uses there, and again, th- this is something that, and I, I might say this, uh, in all sincerity, that we can change two years down the road, when we've got a proper place where we can actually do that, we would do this, all right? But, so that we can at least allow that without changing.
I think the easiest way to get those hands would be to, to change this, to make section three into more than one section.
Yes.
Yes.
One, one of the, one of the, one part of this is about, about car repair, car washing.
Yeah.
And, and, car, car servicing, repair, and washing, which is pretty much just that, and the other is storage of commercial, uh, yeah, commercial storage and sales, or car doors, or, or.
Well, then, R B, uh, the summer, B.
Or, or R B storage.
When they were down, they couldn't wash the vehicle, they had to move them over to the marina and wash them.
With the, the cover, the cover.
Which had to have.
Yeah, yeah, which actually, that might have been a misinterpretation of that language, because probably, maybe, or washing, it's different than a washing service, and that was to try it up, but maybe not, you might be right, you might be right.
We're also talking about use of wastewater, which is.
Right.
Because, you know, the rain, that does have wastewater, so if you, uh, uh, for the, uh, for the, uh, for the, uh, for the, uh, so they've got a crap, and everything, so there's, there's, they've got a system.
No.
Where they're starting to place it, and I might not be wrong, yeah. And, and probably on this nature of washing.
It's probably about the water.
It's more about the water and wastewater.
The activity.
Yeah, the activity, that makes sense.
But, but, but to one of the points, we could, we could separate out the, it's, the storage and, commercial storage and sale of stuff could be separated from the, the paint service and washing, of, of, of the same stuff.
So, let's, let's see how we can break that, I will make, pretty make more sense, and, and, uh.
Can we put a percentage on how much, for example, storage we could have in the small town commercial?
Overall?
Overall, and to say, it cannot exceed five percent of total lots of parcels in this section.
How would we monitor that?
That's, 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 that would be a complaint, I guess, but if you're asking, if you're asking, though, would that be a process of review, to assess that?
That'd be, that'd be akin to how much of your, of your, of a single property, you can put a house, how much of a property?
We'd be able to, we'd be able to.
That's a little time, but to say, you know, this, like, in this small town commercial area, only X percentage.
Yeah, probably some.
On the area of the property, or property, uh, big, or small, but.
Uh, the total property parcel, like, if it was a hundred parcels, only ten of them could be developed for a certain person.
You might actually prefer to say that, the, the ten biggest ones.
Yeah, or however many, for states is.
You might want to say, only a certain square, percentage of the overall, English.
Right, so maybe the percentage of it could be a lot of, or whatever.
Uh, okay, well, you know, when they, you're right, you can suck it forward.
Yeah.
This is sticky enough that I think this is a clip.
I agree.
If we, if we could create a sentence or two that says what we want, okay, for, because now we're saying this is all for, for all, 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 right? Do we never want another, do we want to legitimize Dennis? Do we want to make it hard for any other businesses to come somewhere in small town commercial? How do we limit that without making it impossible? Those are kind of weird, sticky things, I don't understand how to do, and Cliff probably does. So, wha- what do we want? Go back to the, we see a problem, what, what, what's our desire?
I, I think we want, we want, we don't want to discourage business, but we want to encourage the right type of business.
Exactly.
We don't want to wipe out the people that we've got here now, we want to be able to keep them until we can find a proper solution to deal with the problem, uh, without creating a larger problem, you know, but I think we're going, well, they got pens, who likes to be, so, I think it uses the word additional is imperative, because, you know, we keep things that are existing here and now, uh, you know, if, if, what do we apply this to, to the small town commercial district or zone, um, in its entirety, you know, do we want another best M R V, uh, that, you know, there's a car lot, and then if you want it, point of office, do we want another, you know, uh, point of office, or even storage, that they're, that's entirely, we don't want those things cropping up and happening, um, because they're not, they're not pleasing to the eye, they don't let, and they, 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 they serve a purpose, but they don't lend any rights to the community, and, you know, I don't want to detract from the fact that they're businesses, and, and they're, they're providing employment, and they're doing something for us here in the community, so they are a business, we do need to encourage them, but, you know, they've, uh, they've, in a legitimate, proper way that's, that's going to be attractive for the community, be part of a, be part of a community association.
Okay, so, I'd like to see a suggestion of, we may make a couple of sentences of this, that we think aligns with what we want, because language is not, like, we don't have, what, you know, in history, it's our, our language.
I'll just break it in quick, I wrote this all out, and I'll send it to you, David, again, email.
And I need to remember, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm wondering, because it's, it's clear language, so we're, I think, it's additional, it's a really good term here, because we got things like you said, that are already existing, we don't want to change that and rip people out of the ground, but not having additional trailer blocks for the sentence is a good idea, not having additional mini storage or whatever else is a good idea, but I think having some kind of lasting business-based storage for a company, like Stumpy, or me, or someone else, that should be legitimate thing to have. But you have to have something, it's other than just storage as a business, that we're going to be able to.
Or ancillary, so it's got, the storage is ancillary to the actual business.
Yeah, anyway, Dennis is there, obviously, the business is working, he needs to be doing appearance and stuff, but I don't see any concern with commercial car wash situation, we're in a house, and they're already gathered somewhere else, so it's, it's not a non-question, it's not.
Well, but then you look at the fact, like, a lot of these contractors have equipment, they have to hose off every time they go in, so now they're doing on public roads, which is a huge issue. Um, so if we had a communal spot, just for example, I don't know, I think, I would think of maybe further investing in a, a total percentage of how much, how many businesses could be for storage or washing and do on small town commercial, because then we're not making that individual company, or type of company, and commercial, and we're not really able to control everything that's in here.
Yeah, well, really.
I think if you get to, if we just have kind of these guidelines that we're comfortable, if we know we don't want, you know, X amount of storage, kind of, storage businesses on that strip, unless, you know, I mean, we're going to head backwards that way.
Well, I agree, and, and, you know, part of the reason that storage is, is easy, a lot of these pieces of those, because of the line accepted, and, and, uh, so, engine, probably, so, yeah. But they don't have that for the, for storage, they don't have for the bathroom.
That's a good point.
Right, that's, but they do, they do, when, when you start implementing, uh, you know, carbon bag and ash log, and, and, and you do have to have a place to store and water and wastewater, uh, so those are other issues that, that they may not consider, uh, but, but we should also consider while we're doing this, because, as I said, it's, it's easy, you know, you can knock out those trees and put parking lot in your facility, and you're fine. And it's, it's, don't need something, don't need water, don't need, you know. I think, I think this one really needs a lot of, uh.
Yeah.
I, I, what, here's, here's an idea, and I, I don't mind chatting the clip, because I'm gonna talk with it anyway. Is if everybody could send me an email, give me their thoughts, and then I'll just put the emails together, the information, you know, just to get point, but, but the best bit is to how you'd like to see that broken up. And I'll present that, and Cliff will say, hey, Cliff, here's this, this is what the ideas are from each of the people, uh, you know, we, we, I think this has been a great discussion, I think we've got a lot of good ideas, uh, and then we can, uh, we can put it to him, oh, in the hopes that he can put some language together that's gonna meet everybody's ideas. I think we're all on the same page, I think we're all trying to create the same thing and accommodate the same thing without pretty much, you know, a, a, a problem, yeah. And that way, we'll get a clear obligation, uh, test out your percentages, and, and if that's workable for them, which, you know, I think it probably could be, it just depends on how, how we word that to, to suit them for the standpoint of enforcement, not that they're gonna have to enforce it, but if they do, the language has to be good and coded. If, if we leave too much, and that was one of the things that, as you said, is make sure that the language is explicit, uh, because if you don't make it explicit, then, you know, you start running into these problems. And it doesn't have to be clear.
Speaking of clear, is that you?
Yeah.
Was that you?
Yeah.
Oh. That's very busy.
Yeah, well, I have to work tonight, so, uh, my timeline is about, about twenty minutes. So, do we want to push on, or are we hitting the wall, it sounds to me like all the energy is.
We could also, we could also call it.
Yeah.
Do, do we just want to go with four and nine?
Yeah.
Which are recreational people.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, you're clear, yeah.
The cemetery.
I want to check, my, my, I want to check what, what is addition, what is an additional?
Because I'm one year.
Oh, 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 yeah, okay.
I was reading all, I mean, the things I'm going, additional, well, okay.
But I don't want to, 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 to.
So, there, there, so adding the word additional, that is, is a fact.
Why are they so worried ultimately?
In small town.
I've never, yeah.
It clearly looks like an ordinance.
Did someone threaten to do that? I know, there's some people that, maybe in, in small town.
Yeah, I don't know, but you probably, yeah, probably wasn't a point of ours.
Yeah.
As a result, we would have said, we have some very. Well, it had to be, yeah.
I know, but, but if they, well, no, it could have been the county, but I said.
You better, you gotta add them.
You should probably, you know, have an authority along with it, because you can't under that.
You have to remember, one of ours is called Icelanders, and, and, and they all wanted to be buried in the same place, and one of you.
That's true. By the way, uh, before we break up, um, uh, three fifty, the only thing in my mind that matters was the, uh, setback, uh, fifty feet, and this is something else, I don't know, really, did I not? Yeah, we could maybe talk about this, maybe just deal with it.
Okay. Next thing you heard.
Yeah, next thing, oh, three fifty.
Considering it's a page.
Yeah, so basically, the, the simple way to handle this is, um, just say, small town commercial, because there's no forest in a small town commercial.
And why would they Roosevelt, I thought, underlined a question mark, like, why would specifically say Tahiti and Roosevelt?
This is, we don't know why they say Roosevelt, I have no idea.
It's not a, yeah.
You know, existing trees, all the.
The only setbacks on Tahiti and Roosevelt are entries of fifty feet and forty feet respectively.
Not some of our best forests, but some of that forest is actually on the other side of the border. Just, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know why I would really do that.
And, and Julia said that was just to make it look like.
That was for Tahiti, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, what was that?
Tahiti, it was to me. You know, even there's someone that was though, too, because, you know, they put the utilities there, are underground, and I thought that was just because the trees were always falling on utilities, and I thought Jim or somebody told me, and I was like, oh.
It's like aesthetics, and this is the first center, yeah, or, or, yeah. It was a beautiful forest.
And it was, it used to be, when you came in quite a lot, that you could turn around and go, that Roosevelt, you do wait.
Oh, okay, that's.
Well, we can leave that, but, but is it, is it a small town commercial, or is it a big commercial?
Well, there is no concern, it's, it's about, it could only set that, unless you don't have a concern.
And you have to leave it to number two, which is a small town one?
What do you mean?
No, okay, the forest setback is, okay, curving out, it's a new deal for not the forest, okay, which is basically from small town commercial up to the border, and then you've got the middle zone up there, that, um, you can't, the setbacks, uh, she said, now, for this one, we have heard other people's plans, because the setback is so big, it's all on Tahiti, whereas really, maybe, it should only be for the forest area, and wait, you're gonna, you're gonna regulate forest area, or just say small town commercial. So, remove the fifty foot setback in small town commercial, because right now, it covers small, it covers Tahiti, which includes small town commercial, covers everything.
But here, it says small town commercial is on a long Gulf Road. And, and number two.
Right, and the second.
It's strictly the first Gulf Road.
Well, that, well, that's another problem, that's not the forest and fifty foot.
When Jim was talking about, he said, it's rooftop oriented, because the fifty foot setback says a long Tahiti, but there's no more forest that you get custom set.
That's what I was addressing.
So that, if you say setback is potentially hurting businesses.
Right, so just say small town commercial, it does not have a fifty foot setback.
And then that's Tahiti and Gulf, but Tahiti.
There are, well, there's forest that controls place, so, so this, there's, so where's it, basically stops, though, the, the, just beyond the, I mean, above the gas club, the hoes, guys, the apartments. That's where it, that's, that's a small town commercial in, just, yeah, yeah, right. So, there's, there's wind, there's wind, uh, there's wind above that, that's where we don't really know whether we can truly get down the toll.
Right.
Well, it was far, it was far from, uh, right, because it was, that would open, yeah, it was the farm next to, I mean, the reeds.
Yeah.
And it was, uh, the, the word, I, I thought that was, uh, her, it was, it was, and, 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 it's, 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 it's far all the way up there.
Right, right, so, so, so this language, though.
Well, I, I mean, now it's not a forest exit, and it, it clearly hasn't been, because this fifty foot setback, the whole trees are gone.
Well, they don't, they may have, they may have, I mean, I mean, they, they, they certainly did, and that was, I, I read.
And now they've done that.
And this M R V is on a different zone, so.
Well, it's, it's on a zone, it's.
It's on the, Tahiti and Roosevelt.
Yeah, we talked to Shox about that, and they kind of ruminated, and they agreed that since it's zone, was it DG, or, I forget what it is, RG, RG, Zona RG.
They would go with the zoning rather than the overlay.
Yeah, exactly.
So the one having overlay didn't.
Oh, the overlay, yeah, so let's throw the whole thing out. Some people want that.
Some people want.
I, I think, I think I'd agree, agree with him, that let's try to keep a fifty foot setback on the trees that are there, and, and people, the county people out there, they'll actually do it. In open areas, a fifty foot bumper will be created, if you're gonna turn, if you're gonna turn around those farms, one of those former farms, yeah, you're going to, this is back, uh, back into, uh, couple, well, not back, it's a, it's a commercial.
Yeah.
Then you need to create a fifty foot bumper.
Yeah.
Where there probably is.
There's, there's, of course, on the west side, on the east side, the area where it's, uh, you're a farm, and, uh, and then, uh, you gotta build some, so that section of the property.
Basically, it comes down to God, and the first example would be God.
Yes, right.
When he, like, uh, not just, not just spent it, he probably should have a fifty foot bumper, and plant trees in it, so that thirty years from now, we can see trees, not his R V.
But that's where it's going.
That's different.
That's, that'll be screened, but they still got that setback.
Right, there's a setback plus the planting, and that's what it says now, I, I wouldn't say there's a change, but, but help put things back that were more attractive, yeah, I agree, this should down the road at some point.
Agreed.
Um, but it doesn't affect, it doesn't really affect small town, I didn't, I mean, based on the next sentence, where it's starting at Gulf Road, and we could, if you go counter the argument, you're just, I was, I was, you could tie in that, as we, I would recommend, but.
No, I, I don't, I understand why Gulf Road needs to be, you know, separately, like, have a, 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 a wider swath of Tahiti.
On Gulf Road, you wouldn't want fifty foot, so, like, the trees, but you wouldn't see the businesses that you're finding. So the complaint isn't about that last sentence, in open areas, a fifty foot plan, or, or should be built, but God, he's already, because he's in small town commercial, he's been forced to do screening, shouldn't be ever seeing. So, we don't need a fifty foot setback.
He said he was gonna do.
He did.
Yeah, so that's, so, I, I, I think this discourages the property, as you said, um, oh, my Google just bought it, so that discourages that, but that's not fair either.
The property is, uh, between marketplace and that's, yeah.
And I'm, I'm, you own all the way to the corner?
Yeah.
Okay, so, but there's no forest in that, like, it's, hey, hey, go, not, not the, not like a commercial.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't, I guess, I don't have to plant trees there.
That was, that property on the, uh, on the east side of Tahiti was all farm, that was the farm, and, and the farmhouse is still there, we worked the bottom down years ago, by the way. It's, it's related to the stage of being around individuals, you know, till something changes. But I would think, I would leave that at the farm.
Well.
At least as part of my property.
At least as part of the guy's property, and I've got, and I'll be here, that, you know, he, we'll, we'll have to talk to him about adding, you know, if, he should, first of all, comply with the fifty foot setback with, and it's also aligned with the site line, it's creating a business that he's already agreed to.
Yeah, as long as it doesn't create an issue with his residence.
Go back to the basic of his property, what he did develop, and I have also heard tale of him wanting to put in, uh, I know this term can rail on people, but.
All.
Best strip mall, and fifty foot setback was.
That would be a lot of.
So, well, that's, that's, look at the show line. That was fifty foot setback.
Plant, planted trucks.
Where's the, the?
The show bar.
Because of those, like, fifty, so.
It's a building, a building.
Well, that's, there's never forest.
We're talking about forest here, fifty foot planted bumper, planted bumper, yeah, sorry, fifty foot planted bumper, right here.
Well, then, you have to put in a fifty foot planted bumper, and you have to, you have to, you have to, but, but, I mean, that's.
That's not gonna happen.
The show station is in the client, the public's going to get it.
Oh, first, the, the show station was put in the way it is, where it said several entrances, because they were planning on putting a wall in the back, or, or, the property, and, and, they wanted to put a wall in there. And they used, the humble orange, but, but, when, uh, Tom Ratter, he wanted to, uh, uh, with local labor, by the way, just wanted to make sure.
Good.
And, 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 hopefully, hopefully, it's, well.
Okay, so, it can, yeah, a nice little strip mall, like we say, a lovely shell, with a little ingress, egress, and little gardens.
And forested?
Yeah, well, a fifty foot, it was, it was, and the shell, the shell was not really for, of, anything.
No, no, it's, it's not, it was, it was, you know, what, it was.
Fifty foot seems a lot.
This is the end of the day.
This is a, this is a planted, planted bumper, so even at the show station.
This is a, this is a, this is a planted, planted buffer, so even if the shop station wasn't forested, there's required here for fifty foot planted buffer, and I'm wondering if that's too much.
Because, I mean, given you do go property, and the property is below goal, on Taiyi, they're the only ones affected by that.
You would do that much, because if you do less in terms of forest, I mean, if you're trying to do landscape, you know, quantity might be attractive, but if you're trying to create a tree buffer.
I'm not, because a tree buffer is up here in the, in the, in the zoning language, this is just in the open areas.
But it's not, but it's still talking about, it's talking about Taiyi, basically, on Roosevelt, it's talking about Taiyi.
I'm saying we leave forest at car lot, fifty foot of forest has to stay by itself, and the sentence starts with, in open areas, so not forest areas, fifty foot blended buffer shall be developed as part of the normal landscape part, I think that's too much for.
I agree.
Well, that would be, that would be too much.
I might do it with a pass.
See, see, the, the property, because I think that.
Yeah, this is a good debate, we just, please, I'd like to pose this as a problem to Cliff, what would you do with this? Because we want to keep the forest up there, but we don't want to destroy people working in small town commercial to develop it, because, um, otherwise we're going to get, you know, all kinds of crazy stuff everywhere else, and bring it into.
Well, put that, put that in the opposite.
Exactly, but that direction, next section, you'll put small town commercial on Gulf, so you're only talking about small town commercial on Taiyi, that will save it, because the only part.
Right, yeah, this is, this is a paragraph.
The domain's land is. And we're really talking that section essentially between that scene and, and Gulf.
Yeah.
And, and so, and possibly the only one that would be caught by this, in, one way to deal with it, that would make a difference between the Benson to Kauf section and the Benson to Johnson section above it, which will only affect, pretty much only affect God, is if we let, if you let that in for respect to the border requirement. Yes.
Then he would need to do, not just put a fence up, and I was, and he'd need to plant trees, and eventually it would make this whole place invisible, um, whereas below.
I think very soon.
Yeah, you do.
Right, right, but, but as it's written now, it sounds like it goes beyond, below all as well.
And I think that's what Jim Julius was saying, and that's stupid.
Yeah.
Because there's no point in having it going down there.
One, one, I think the way it was, I think the way it was written, it was intended to put it back in forested, whereas obviously for the last other year, since the farm, it probably went to just in fields.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what I'll do is I'll, I'll wait for your emails, and I'll, I'll formulate an email based on all your emails, with all your points. I have a order to you for your approval before I send it to Cliff, so that I make sure that I have your points.
I want that by just.
Uh, put it in a week.
Put that in a week.
Don't forget, we fought on the scenic highway, and you're one of the few, according to Hermine, and John, I said, we worked with the county on that, we're some of the few in, um, talking to counties, they have a state, which is a big deal. We, I think, are the only ones that are county scenic highway, where they have some kind of code that allowed for it, and they were all for it because they never had one before.
But you know, you know what happened? Michael seems to have completely excluded that scenic highway.
That was, that was the county.
You know what, what's, no, it has RV, he said, those people are asking, they're like, I don't want to go deal with it, I heard it, right in the G O meeting. That's where I was learning, you know, the scenic route goes down, down where they wrote to Johnson.
Yeah.
And then points out Johnson, they go down Johnson, the county wrote, so the county completely waves.
I argue, going down Maple, up Roosevelt, and back down to Miller.
And it's a little, and now he's, uh, can we just do one thing at a time?
I think we're a jury.
I think we're a jury, thank you, jury, my name is, I think that was very bad call.